For July 29, 2022 order. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Madam Chair, we'll start with roll call first and then I'll give the report on the posting of the agenda. Commissioner Donenfeld is excused. Commissioner Irvin?
President.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
President.
Commissioner Lewin is excused. Commissioner Song?
President.
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Here.
And Chair Wermuth?
Here.
We have a quorum. Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, July 23. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
I shall move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can you call the roll, please, or say aye or nay?
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The vote is unanimous.
Do we have any public comment?
Madam Chair, we have no one scheduled to speak under public comments.
Then I will open and close the public comment period. There is no consent calendar. We only have new business tonight, which is the 2007 General Plan Limited Update, Review of the General Plan Steering Committee Recommendation Revisions to the General Plan Vision Statement and Priorities. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The presentation tonight is going to be a little bit different than your normal presentations that you receive from staff in that we will have an interactive PowerPoint presentation for you as we get further along into the slides. Obviously, what we're reviewing tonight is the vision and priorities. And so as we look at what that is for the 2007 General Plan, the vision serves as really the foundation for all goals and policies of the general plan. So it is the common ground from which decisions are made and really defines priority areas where resources are to be focused. So it's a high-level statement that is really the kind of the foundation for the city's long-term vision. The priorities are statements that are values and themes that are more focused in attention and provide future direction for the city. They have, as I said, they're more focused in order to prioritize use of staff resources and the allocation of the budget. So they are a little, they are a bit more direct in how they are written as opposed to the kind of overall vision of the city. And one thing that it's important to note that in our general plan, we have also goals and policies which our vision and priorities are different than those. So the goals in the general plan, basically, they're statements of desired future conditions regarding a particular topic. They paint the picture of how something will be or will look like in the future. They paint the picture of how something will be or will look like in the future. And the goal itself is to be kept simple with policies, objectives, and implementation actions providing future or further definition. The policies are what basically further define the goals. They guide decision-making, specify public commitment, and the policies define and direct how we are achieving the goals. So as we began the general plan update, the city, of course, wanted to ensure that we had a variety of community engagement tools as a part of this process. As we update the general plan, we did prepare a survey that was pushed out to the public for participation. And so that survey went public on February 24 when the city had a community workshop that the public was invited to at the Palm Springs Convention Center. The city, or I should say, staff and development services also did outreach to certain organizations to really go out into the community and get feedback on the city's vision and priorities. So we brought with us print copies of the survey. So we were able to get survey online as well as handwritten surveys as a part of our outreach efforts. We also posted the survey on our social media platforms in order to also get additional feedback from those who really follow the city on its social media handles. And then, of course, we have our dedicated website to the general plan update, psgeneralplan.com. And that is actually where the survey was available at any time for anyone to take, who wanted to participate. So the survey itself was, as I said, it opened up on February 24 and was available for anyone to take through March 13, 2020. We had that survey in both English and Spanish versions. And I'll get into more details of the results of the survey momentarily. But as a part of the review of the vision and priorities, we had the general plan steering committee, who has met on three occasions to date, review the results of the survey. They got a summary of the results. They got the detailed version or comments of the results of the survey. And so they were really charged with distilling the information that we received from that survey and incorporating that into the vision and priority statements. So after, and what we are doing here tonight is the next step, and that's now that we have the recommendations from the steering committee, the planning commission will review these vision and priority statements. And those will be, your recommendation will be forwarded to City Council for final review. And really will serve as the next, or as I said, the foundation for our next phase of the update. And that is, you know, looking at the specific goals and policies of the chapters that we are doing as a part of this update. So what we heard about the vision statement is that about just a little more than half of those who participated in the survey were okay with the current vision. There were some recommendations in terms of what could be improved or changed in the vision statement. There's a few phrases that were specifically called out as being items that might be revised or removed to really fit with what the community's long-term vision is for Palm Springs. So you can see there was some comments about removing high style, prioritizing the village feel of the city, defining cultural, architectural, and historic resources within the vision, being inclusive and a diverse community as being key components of our vision, ensuring that our natural environment and parks and sustainability, those topics are addressed, and so forth. So this is the part where we'll jump in and kind of get some more feedback from you all as we look at what changes are being made as a part of the vision statement. So as you can see here in this slide, the 2007 vision that was adopted back in 2007 is on the left. And then what we have here on the right is the general plan steering committee recommended revision. I also sent you this afternoon the strike-through version, or I should say, the red line version of the changes that are proposed to these statements. So you should have a copy of that. But essentially, some key things that were changed are the words world renowned were removed. There's been some changes to document that, you know, Palm Springs is identified within this phrase or within the phrases of the vision. There was emphasis on creating or indicating that the city is a year-round and has year-round and seasonal residence. And then we also wanted to change the second sentence about enhancing natural, cultural, and historic resources and really emphasizing that the city balances economic growth with sustainable environment that preserves and enhances our natural architecture, culture, and historic resources. One thing that was added to the vision is that we celebrate our diversity and foster equity and unity among all of our residents. So that was a new phrase that has been added to the vision statement. And then, lastly, we made some minor changes to the last sentence here that about the city being responsive, friendly, and efficient in terms of its public services. And so those are really the kind of the main changes that we've had or that have been proposed by the steering committee. And I'll turn it back to the chair to facilitate any discussion that the commission might have about these changes.
Madam Chair, your microphone is off.
Yes. So I'll take comment on this. Do I have any comments on it? Michael, Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, just one. I've always been, I think my involvement with the city through the planning commission and the architectural advisory committee over these many years has been to the conflict or the, not conflict, but there's a need to resolve the balance between what are commercial interests, and I include real estate development under commercial interests, be it housing or commercial, with the priorities of the residents that live here. And I think, at least in the vision portion of it, some statement to that effect needs to be in here, that we make decisions in a balanced way that looks at both the commercial interests and the interest of the residents because they don't always coincide.
Are there other comments and other suggestions? And we'll come back, Michael, to your language.
I'm just wondering, Chair Wermuth, are you chairing the subcommittee?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about why and how, why you changed these individual planned priorities? You obviously put a lot of thought into it, so merely you should be, I think, telling us what your thoughts were and the commission, the committees' thoughts.
We spent, just in the vision statement, I think what would be fair to say that we did was we took the original vision and then tried to work with the comments. I think we've left out a few of the public comments as I was reviewing them for this, but tried to work with those comments and come up with a vision of the city that represents the current day. We didn't want to call ourselves world renowned. We think we have a, you know, a significant place. And calling ourselves a desert resort community where we wanted to emphasize both year-round, seasonal residents and visitors are here. We spent a lot of time differentiating the community from what were specific city functions like balancing growth with a sustainable environment and that the city provides friendly services because this, obviously, the whole of the populace doesn't. Diversity was something we wanted to include in this. I think we didn't, because we were working with the original language, we stayed a little closer to it. And what I was hoping people would do today is take a fresh look at it. Commissioner Song?
Yes, I am in agreement with Commissioner Hirschbein's comment, especially on the bullet point in which there should be more services and amenities here towards, to family and in conflict with expand image of Palm Springs beyond high style to embrace its more approachable and laid-back, you know, relaxed atmosphere. It's really difficult to find a balance between the two because it's geared to different income levels and different needs in the city. So how do we attempt to balance that? I think it would be challenging in its own, but also having the definition of how to do that will be very helpful. In general, I had the question of, there is quite a bit of public emails that have been received by Planner Newell as well as Director Fag. On those comments, they were included with these revisions. Number one, the question for what purpose, to be considered now or to be considered after the language has been edited with the general plan, that will be the question. And then, two, my review of, even though in general, the majority of the people were accepting of the general plan as is, I think the committee has done a really good job in making the language not so absolute, but maybe more inclusive. That's how I saw the efforts to be.
Is there any way you can put the slide back up for a second? I guess I have a question with the term enhancing versus balancing. What was the reason for the changing of enhancing? Because to me, enhancing seems like it's improving it, and balance kind of seems like it's, you know, you're just trying to make sure that it stays in between. Is there a reason for the change?
I think the committee felt that we actually do balance economic growth with the need for a sustainable environment and that there always is a balance when you're approving something or not approving something.
Will we still, oh, sorry. Will we still be enhancing it?
We did say, well, preserving and enhancing our natural, architectural, cultural, and economic and historic resources. And listening to Commissioner Hirschbein, I think we might want to say we balance economic growth with the needs of the residents and a sustainable environment. I don't know if anybody else wants to include the needs of the residents in that sentence. Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, I don't know if this is the right word or not, but I use the priorities of the residents.
We could change the language back to we enhance, we enhance and preserve our natural, cultural, and historic resources and make it a little longer if that works for Commissioner Irvin.
What about Michael's comment?
I think what, and Flynn, possibly, you can help me with this. The language would be the city balances economic growth with the priorities of the residents while striving to, with the priorities of the residents and the need for a sustainable environment.
Madam Chair, yeah, I think we can finesse that. What I might recommend is that if you're comfortable with the direction of that, we'll put together these changes and bring them back to the planning commission in September just to finalize the language. It's a little bit tough to wordsmith right here and now and get it perfect. And so after we finish our discussion tonight, we'll finalize these and bring them back to the planning commission at the first meeting in September.
Can I just suggest that I think you're trying to put too many concepts in that one sentence?
No, I agree with, I'm sorry.
So you might want to separate them out, that's all.
And I think we should separate them out. Are there other comments on this, this vision statement? Is there anything that people think is missing or is off-key?
I think it's quite appropriate.
Good, okay. And Flynn, you have a sense of the wordsmithing we want to do?
Yes, I do. I'm sitting here at my laptop typing this in as you're speaking, so I've got that down. Thank you.
Okay, so what we go to from here, this is the general vision statement, and then we go to priorities. And these aren't the, they're priorities of the general plan, but they're not the action statement. So I want you to look at two different things. One, do these encompass the goals that came out of the surveys? And are they the right priorities for the city? And then, do you like the language? So I think we have to look at it on three different levels. And going to the first one, David, do you want to pick this up here?
Yes, so if we get the slide back up, I'll jump into it. Okay, so yeah, as Madam Chair said, we did, of course, have additional responses or we had responses on the survey about each of the priorities. There are 10 priorities that are part of the set of basically specific goals or not goals, but direction that the city should be in 20 years. So what we heard was that a majority of what the priorities are written, as they're written, were fine. Seven priorities exceeded 70% of favorability as they are written from our respondents. About 80% approve of efficient use of resources and preservation of unique built environment. So those were priorities two and eight. And then the lowest approval rating that we had for the 10 priorities was the range of retail and the range of housing options in the city. So those were priorities four and five, and we'll go through those 10 priorities. So priority So priority one was that the city support Palm, you know, that we support Palm Springs as one of the world's premier desert resorts. There was some comments in the survey about less focus on being premier or world destination and more recognition of the city's identity as a small city with a local population. So the Steering Committee recommended that the words, the words "one of the world" be removed as well as a change to how the last portion of the sentence is written for the green sentence here. So support Palm Springs as a premier desert resort community. So again, more focus on just that we are a premier city. It's not necessarily that we're one of the world's premier desert cities, but more locally focused. And then the only other revision that you have in this priority recommended by the Steering Committee is the removal of including downtown. So that was the only other change that you see or that you'll see or you'll notice in the black text on the right side of the screen.
I'm comfortable with saying a premier desert resort community. I mean, that's why Palm Springs is famous. And that's why people have been coming here for the last 80 years.
I think we, Commissioner Maruzzi, we kept the world's, or the word premier desert resort community.
We did, I agree. And I was saying that some of the comments from the public were to make it more focused on the local, it's a premier residential community, so on and so forth. But I think it's the number one priority is that it's support Palm Springs as a premier desert resort community. You don't have to put the information that it's also a place where people live and so
Are there other comments? Do people generally agree with this as it's written?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzzi? Commissioner Hirschhorn?
I would, I agree with Commissioner Maruzzi that obviously keeping and enhancing Palm Springs as a premier desert resort is definitely a priority. I was just thumbing through the rest of the priorities and maybe it'll come through, but I just want to make sure there is a priority in there that makes our residents a priority, generally.
Why don't we go through this and then come back to that and make sure that we've dealt with that? And the priorities are not in order, so this isn't the first priority of the city? It's one of 10? Or one of 11?
That's not very obvious.
It's not obvious, no.
Should probably be stated somewhere.
Flynn, how do we handle that?
We'll go ahead and make that notation. And as we make the updates to the general plan, and in particular, this section, we'll note that these are not in any order relative to their priority, that they're all priorities, but one does not take precedence over the others.
Thank you. David, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so on to priority number two. This one had a bit more discussion, although 79% of the participants in the, participants of the survey agreed that the priority is relevant as written. But we did have some changes to this one. I think it's just generally geared towards the issue that the city is, you know, we've progressed in our sustainability overall since 2007. You know, obviously, we have a sustainability office. We have a sustainability commission. We have sustainability master plans. So we've done a number of things in the city that have helped us really get further along in being a leader in sustainability and energy use. So this priority was rewritten or did have some, I guess, more modifications, I should say, than what you saw with the last or others especially. So instead of establishing the city as a leader in efficient use of resources, it's been rewritten to say that we're to continue to advance sustainability and livability in the city of Palm Springs. So that's really the primary focus of this priority. And as far as how that is expanded upon here in the black text, you can see that we are still promoting efficient use of energy, but we're a little more specific in saying that it's energy, land, water, and other natural resources. So really tying in a variety of things here. And then, and so the focus is to, of course, enhance the sustainability and livability of our community. And then there was a question as to whether or not this last sentence was really relevant. The discussion that the Steering Committee had regarding the last sentence that struck through here or stricken here is that it's too specific for what I think sustainability is in current day. So the question was, you know, should this be even a part of the priority? Or can we, you know, remove it? Should we rewrite it to say that it's, the city should create energy and use it in an efficient way? So those are kind of some of the questions that were discussed at the Steering Committee. There are other ways to demonstrate sustainability. So that's why this, you know, do we want to keep this sentence in or not? And I'll turn it back to the Chair.
The other, before I turn it over to the group, on page two of the summaries of the surveys, one of the very first issue was the desire to address climate change. And as we look at this, I wanted you to look at the language and make sure that this language does address climate change, or should we be more specific? Commissioner Hirschhorn?
I'm happy with keeping that last sentence in. I don't see a need to take it out. I think it reinforces the message. I have, this is not the question you asked, but again, it seems like you're pushing too many concepts here. I don't know what exactly livability is. I know what sustainability is. It's a, you know, it's a relative term, but I know what it is. Livability is kind of a, like you can't really catch on to it and make any sort of decisions around that word. And it might go to my comment before, but putting it into this box, I think minimizes both the sustainability portion of the vision and what you might want to call livability, if you can define it a little bit more. But it doesn't have anything necessarily to do with sustainability.
I think I might have added that. And my real issue was heat. Dealing with climate change, finding ways to minimize the increasing heat in the desert.
Well, that's a lofty goal, and I support it. I just.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that belongs there. I'll just tell you what the thinking was. It came in very late in the discussion. And it was, it was an attempt to put the concept of climate change into this, into
Well, I mean, you could reference climate change. You could say, and attempt to mitigate issues of, you know, concern, problems around climate change. You could say that specifically.
In the introduction sentence?
I mean, it might replace that second sentence where you say, remove this sentence. Maybe it'll be in there.
Anybody else on these issues? Commissioner Song?
The way I promote sustainability and livability is if everything is geared just for sustainability, then the human factor gets removed. That's why it's used in balance with sustainability. So for example, if we're looking at sustainability, then all parking lots will have carports with portable tanks. And there will be no consideration for trees. But trees are important for psychological issues, balance issues, and so on. That's why sustainability and livability is used together to balance each other. And so I would like for the word livability to stay there. I support removing the sentence because it gives strength on the simplicity of those three lines that is saying that our city promotes the energy efficiency, blah, blah, as is already stated. And it encompasses a pretty big umbrella in which already the building code and zoning codes already promote a pretty sustainable and livable, you know, ordinance. That's how I see it.
Comments from other commissioners? I can put you on the spot, Commissioner Irvin?
No, I don't have anything. I just, I just, I don't see anything that's so substantial to remove the last sentence. I just don't see anything, you know, maybe you can have both of those there. I just don't see anything really that's, you know, maybe unless it's just trying to be more vague or broad about the statement, but I just don't see anything, you know, I don't see why it should be removed.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
I'd like to keep livability in the statement, the first sentence, anyway. Yeah, I just, the sentence that is being discussed for removal seems too specific, I think, for this, what we're trying to do here. I think the sentence above it is sufficient.
So if we, let me, I think I'm hearing people wanting to keep livability in. And what about adding to, at the bottom of the second sentence, add something to the effect to mitigate the issues arising from climate change?
I concur.
I like that.
So Flynn, do you have that? And can I get a sense of where the group stands?
Madam Chair, just to confirm, you wanted to add the statement to mitigate issues arising from climate change to the end of the second sentence?
To the, not the heading. And I think, I think there's a majority for taking the third sentence out.
Okay, understood.
But let me get a sense of the group first. So the proposal would be to keep the word livability and keep the first sentence, which is promote the use, the efficient use of energy, land, water, and then add something in attempt to mitigate issues that are, you know, other issues that arise around climate Can I have a sense of whether people feel comfortable with that? Commissioner Song?
Yes, feel comfortable with that. And then I think Kathy, we're at a tie. I believe Peter and I mentioned removing the sentence and then.
And Michael, and I, just, does anybody else want to speak to that? I would probably want to remove that sentence because I think it's too specific and takes away from the second sentence.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yeah, me also.
So we can move on to this. Flynn, you have a sense of what wordsmithing you're going to do?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, David, do you want to do the third?
Yes.
The third bullet?
Yeah, so priority number three, this one again. Sorry?
See you there?
Priority number three, this one had some more changes. This one, there was, I'll just give you the synopsis from the survey results. We had 66% agreed that the priority is relevant and about a third of the participants suggested changes. So with probably the more prevalent theme being more economic diversity and a variety of business types. So the change that the Steering Committee recommended is that not only should we diversify the city's economic foundations, but we should strengthen those foundations and we should improve, instead of promote, the business infrastructure to ensure businesses can thrive. And so the words, the first, you know, Palm Springs is the first choice for business was taken out. So those are kind of the primary focal point revisions to the priority. There was also changes to the text that really are related to earning a living wage here in the city, promote that for workers, invest in improving public and private infrastructure for a digital future. So that's really to support businesses in the city of Palm Springs. And then also, the Steering Committee felt that we needed to develop and encourage employment and education opportunities for the workforce. So I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
The focus of what, we think this is, we thought this was terribly important. We didn't think that you can just choose a business with high wages and entice them to come into the community if we don't have a good educational foundation and we don't have the kind of infrastructure they need to be able to locate in Palm Springs. So we went in a different direction than the, this was probably the most revised of Commissioner Song, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I, I like, I concur with how education and employment is very critical to go hand in hand. It's a general plan priority to set a category apart for education for the city of Palm Springs.
It might be, you know, continuing to attract the university here, to attract other institutions that would provide educational opportunities. This wasn't really directed at the public schools. I don't know if that's clear enough in it, but I think we need a good, we need an educated workforce to attract business.
So is the education opportunity within the profession? So there is training within the profession?
We didn't go that far. I don't, you know. I don't, you know, um... Commissioner Maruzzi?
It says in the header, "diversify and strengthen the city's economic foundations." Wouldn't it, isn't it really diversify and strengthen the city's economic diversity? Or trying to, isn't the concept here trying to diversify the economy so they're not so tied to tourism?
Yes.
So I don't know, is it foundations?
Probably not.
Cities economic diversity? I don't know. Diversity has so many meanings these days. Oh, it starts with diversify. Diversify and strengthen the city's...
The city's economy.
Yeah, really, it's the city's economy. Yes.
I think that's the word that we need. Anybody else?
One other thing, I'm sorry.
Yep.
When it says, "improve the business infrastructure," what does that mean exactly?
It really means that we need, you have to pay attention to roads, parking, connectivity, things that would bring people, businesses in. For example, if you're in the south side of Palm Springs, they have very little internet connectivity there, or less. It's not as stable. So the other thing it could mean is the IHUB, which is promoting new, you know, promoting new businesses through investment and... I think this kind of left out encourage new businesses, you know, new enterprises.
That's different from business infrastructure.
Yes. It might come underneath it to...
Well, I think you're saying that, diversify and strengthen the city's economy.
Mm-hmm.
That's it right there. And one of the ways to do that is to improve the infrastructure.
Aren't there a lot of other ways that you can improve business opportunity here? To ensure that businesses thrive? I mean, regulations and red tape and all that kind of sort of thing that they talk about, supporting businesses with investment from the city or something, I don't know. It's more than just business infrastructure.
I think it is. I think that this was too narrow.
Because we, for downtown, we, the city invested tax dollars to improve business, right? There's a lot of different ways to improve and help businesses thrive.
Well, we, we left, yes, there are. Possibly...
What about taking out the very first sentence, the blue tax, and just leaving in "develop and encourage employment and education opportunities"?
I think we still want to diversify the city's economy, don't we? Given the experience we're going through right now, where the city's lost about two-thirds of its income?
No, it says that, a stable and diverse economy.
Do you want to try for language?
Well, I'm just saying, delete that first sentence, "diversify and strengthen the city's economy," or maybe you stop there. And then you pick it up with "develop and encourage employment and education opportunities," et cetera, that will maintain a stable. To Peter's point, it's more than just improving business infrastructure.
I think if we say, "develop and encourage new businesses, employment, and educational opportunities." Because we would have to create new businesses to...
I agree that we should just end it with, "diversify and strengthen the city's economy," period. And then the rest of it, however you're finessing it.
Is there agreement of everybody here to change the heading of the paragraph? I'm not seeing anybody nod no. I'm taking that as a yes. Okay, that we've changed. And then Flynn, I think there's, what we want to add is something about providing support for new businesses, as well as developing and encourage employment and educational opportunities.
Okay, so we'll go ahead...
Does anybody else agree with that? Flynn?
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and finesse that language in the final version.
Thank you. And is there, are there any other comments on this section that anyone would like to change? Okay, we're moving on. Number four?
Okay, so priority number four was really geared towards focus of local, local business versus just a general statement. So instead of "develop a full range," it was "maintain and enhance a diverse range of retail, dining, and entertainment opportunities for local, regional, and tourist markets." So that was really the only change that was suggested by the steering committee, was just some minor changes to that first sentence.
And partially, we understood that we wouldn't be able to do a full range. That given the way that shops make choices, we don't always have the ability to bring in a full range, but we could bring in a diverse range. Any comments on this, or any, Maria?
I feel like it's a little contradiction between maintain and enhance. Can't we start with the word enhance? Because we know what we have, but we want to promote a more diverse range, so we're more direct and clear.
I think the reason maintain came in was because of the coronavirus.
Oh.
That may not continue, but we will have periods of economic ups and downs.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else agrees with that. That's the reason the language was changed the way it was in the work group. Commissioner Maruzzi?
For all the existing businesses, I think they would certainly agree that they should be, you know, maintained. Right? The businesses that are downtown and all over the, you know, the city, they would certainly support maintain. But enhance means, you know, bringing in maybe some more diversity. I kind of like it the way it is.
Anybody else on this one? Are people comfortable with it as it's written?
I am.
Commissioner Irvin?
I am as well.
Commissioner Maruzzi? Commissioner Song? And I am too. So we can go on to number five. David?
Priority, priority number five, this one did not have any changes recommended. The survey respondents, 59% of them agreed that the priority is relevant as it is written. There were some comments about discouraging vacation rentals in the city, encouraging more multifamily housing, encouraging more affordable housing, and supporting housing and services for people experiencing homelessness. So those are some of the kind of main changes or comments, I should say, from members of the public who took the survey. But based on the way it's written being a priority, a kind of a broad priority statement, there were no changes recommended by the steering committee.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
I would remove "and" styles. Why are we encouraging different styles? I mean, it'll happen if it happens. I mean, it's just the market determines styles.
Right.
I think that's a good point. I agree with that. I would add a variety of densities, though. We've struggled with that in planning commission where we get these small lot subdivisions that aren't dense enough in certain areas.
Let's try the language, "encourage development of housing units for all economic levels" and for, and add a variety of densities.
But I like the life stages aspect of it because it shows for younger people all the way up to seniors.
Okay, for... For all life stages. For all economic levels and at a variety of densities. Commissioner Song?
I concur.
You concur. Do we have concurrence on this? Flynn, do you have those changes?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have that change.
And if you can make the words "variety of densities" flow a little more smoothly.
We'll finesse that for you.
Thank you. Okay, number six. David?
Priority number six, there were some changes that were offered for this priority from the steering committee. So it, because I think it has a couple of things that were going on when you read the 2007 priority, we're looking at here creating unique places that strengthen the community identity. So the steering committee suggested create, maintain, and enhance unique places and facilities that strengthen community identity. And so that was kind of where the sentence ends. They removed some other text about visual interest and supporting lively activity. So that was removed from that first sentence. The next sentence was basically rewritten. So "improve parks, community facilities, arts, cultural centers, and landmarks in order to promote the city's rich history, offer visual interest, and support lively activity." So the phrase that was in the first sentence that were removed has been really just pulled down into the next sentence in the paragraph. And there was, so that, because those are really the primary things there. The sentence about concentrating and promoting areas of rich community activity served by efficient multimodal transportation and parking basically was removed because it really didn't relate as much to what I think, or what the steering committee thought was relevant to the first sentence. So those are, those are really the changes that are proposed for priority number six.
And there are two concepts that didn't enter into this when I looked at the, sort of the overall concepts that came out of the surveys. One is to offer services to families. And so... I don't know if we want to say in some place, "family friendly." I don't know if we wanted to use that to increase, to add that concept. And this wasn't clear that we were looking at parks in all of the neighborhoods. And I don't mean each, each of the 42 or 46 neighborhoods we have, but parks around the city. Commissioner Maruzzi?
What is, what does "strengthen community identity" mean? What is community identity? You mean soul city identity or neighborhood identity?
I'd like to speak to that because I had a concern about that too, but I think I have a solution to it. I was struggling with what that exactly meant. But what I would like to see maybe taking its place is referencing fostering community engagement. Because I think the notion of community engagement is important when you're talking about special places within the city. It could be a plaza, it could be a park, it could be a monument, it could be any number of things. But it's something that's bringing the community together so it can engage, you can engage other community members at that spot. But I think fosters community engagement would be an important piece of creating, maintaining, and enhancing unique places.
I like that change. I don't know, maybe other people can speak to it. Commissioner Song?
I'm like-minded. I was using the word "interaction" because the more the community interacts together, they build this sort of ownership towards the community, and they need places to do that. And they promote favors or invitation for other people to wanting to live in that neighborhood. So integration, interaction, I think promotes the social development.
And I think we're changing this a great deal. The committee changed it. We thought that the unique places were going more toward building the downtown because this was done in '07. And this is, this is really responding to the priorities of today. So in terms of language, that foster community, we had engagement, integration, and interaction. Do people have a choice of words?
Madam Chair, I might suggest, just based on your conversation, that it might be worded this way. "create, maintain, and enhance unique places and facilities that foster community interaction and engagement." Does that capture it?
I think it does.
Nice job.
Michael, what do you think?
I'm good. I think we got the concept and hopefully it's communicated well.
I think it does communicate it. Do we have agreement on this? Are there any other changes? Is that, that's thumbs up? Okay, we're going to a new priority that was added by the...
No, you...
Work group. David?
So actually, there's two, there's two items that are happening here in the next one. Priority number seven, this one was an existing priority in the general plan. There were some minor changes to this one. And as a part of the changes to this one, there was a new priority, which we'll discuss next, related to this priority. So basically... So basically, the priority is to encourage the creative mixing of land uses to promote vibrant neighborhoods and commercial areas to reduce the need for vehicle use. So the words "commercial areas" was added, and there was a slight change within the text below the first sentence. And so they removed, they replaced the words, combine residential, retail, office, and other land uses within commercial instead of the downtown, and other key locations to create active, full-service neighborhoods that are less dependent on the automobile. So really what this priority is about is the mixing of land uses in order to, you know, create residential with commercial or office and allow less dependency on vehicle use. So that's really the, you know, minor change to this priority. And as I said, there's the next party that was created by the steering committee. We'll get into a little bit more details about retail opportunities here in the city and the new direction.
So you wanted to take this first?
Yeah. I mean, we had it listed, I think, after, that was the recommendation of the steering committee is, you know, I mean, we can talk about it...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we can talk about it, the next one here as well, because it really does kind of relate to the previous one. And so this was a new priority that the steering committee recommended. So all of it is new, is to nurture retail opportunities for residents in all neighborhoods. And we do that by strengthening and promoting equitable access to a variety of retail opportunities that serve the needs of daily lives in close proximity to all residential neighborhoods. So there was some discussion by the steering committee when they reviewed this, or I should say the previous priority, as it relates to how, basically, the commercial areas are, how they continue to operate, and how we create retail opportunities near neighborhoods. And so that's why this new priority was introduced. There's been discussion, as you all know, about food deserts within the city. So ensuring that we have retail in close proximity to residential areas was an important priority that the steering committee had as they discussed how this city's general plan looks at businesses generally, retail generally. And so that was really the basis for adding this new priority. So priority 7B and priority 7A are kind of, they're different, but they do speak to two kind of issues that should be prioritized according to the steering committee.
Do people want to take these separately? Commissioner Maruzi.
The header, when you add to reduce the need for vehicle use, I mean, that comes out of left field. To me, it encourages the creative mixing of land uses to promote vibrant neighborhoods and commercial areas, but is it only to reduce the need for vehicle use? Or there's obviously benefit in having mixed uses for neighborhoods and commercial areas?
I think you're right. It's not just to, and in our city, it doesn't always reduce it. I think the idea of this was more encouraging mixed-use development, so you would have retail in commercial, you would have residential and commercial nodes.
Yeah. And you can do that if you remove to reduce the need for vehicle use, but in the second sentence, you mentioned that are less dependent on the automobile. So that's the detail for the overall thought in my mind.
I think that's good. Flynn, let me take other comments, and then I'll ask Flynn if this, the way this is worded actually works. Commissioner Song.
The 7A is more of a walkable village, walkable neighborhood. That in itself, when you add the word "walkable," it suggests that it's less dependent on automobiles. And I think what it's trying to encourage is that all the needs are within walking distances. So can we revise or can we update the current general plan so that... In Palm Springs, we are blessed with many what I call villages. We have the downtown village, we have the south end village. In every one of those villages, there could be opportunity for those villages to be more walkable rather than drivable. And that's what 7A is trying to say, is can we look at those areas and can we make them more walkable by changing the opportunity for more mixed use?
So you're saying encourage the creative mixing of land uses to promote walkable villages?
Yeah, there's another word, like walkable distances or walkable, I can't come up with it. But that, to me, that puts the emphasis on the walkability rather than on the vehicle.
Commissioner Maruzi.
I like that. I would say encourage the creative mixing of land uses to promote vibrant and walkable neighborhoods and commercial areas, period. But vibrant and walkable, I wouldn't want to take the vibrancy out of it because you do, you know, you want them to be vibrant, not just walkable. The vibrant and walkable.
That sounds fine. Do people generally agree with that header? That's five thumbs up. Okay. Is the language below it okay, or do we need anything different? It's okay? Okay. So Flynn, you have those changes?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Maruzi, for that wording. That helps.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Okay, 7B, it's a new priority. And I think it's broader than just food deserts. I know that people have mentioned needing hardware stores, needing dry cleaners, and other things, and that there are large areas that don't have access or close access to those services.
Kathy, is this also promoting walkability, or is it that people in our town, instead of driving 10 miles, they will drive four miles?
I think we'll never completely get walkability for everybody to retail.
I concur.
But it may be a shorter driving distance, a shorter bus distance, or a possible walkable. And maybe Commissioner Irvin can help me with that concept, if I can put you on the spot.
You did it again.
I know. But you're...
I just think, I think it's good. It's difficult to be able to get the correct wording to be able to... Can you put that back up again for me? Yeah, I think it's, maybe you possibly could add a little bit of wording of the mileage, but then it'll be kind of specific. I think it's fine the way it is.
Does anybody else think that we need changes in that?
One question. Equitable access, does that mean distance should be near residential neighborhoods? Or what's equitable access?
I think the words equitable access, and maybe we can work on them, is, we have a couple areas in the city that don't have retail close to them. They don't have a full range of daily need retail, and that includes supermarkets, it includes dry cleaners, hardware stores, things that people use on, you know, a frequent basis. Restaurants.
That makes sense. I just, equitable access sounds a little fuzzy to me, but I can't think of anything else, so.
Possibly Flynn might be able to help us with another word?
Yep. Let me work on that. And when we come back in September, let me see if I can substitute something for equitable access that talks about the need that we have businesses that serve all residents in all areas of the city, just as we've talked about. So I'll go ahead and work on that.
Are we okay to go forward with this, with Flynn working on that language? Thumbs up. Yay, okay. David? Number eight?
Priority number eight is, had no recommended changes from the steering committee. Survey respondents, there were 82% that agreed the priority is relevant as written. So there really was no recommended changes for this priority. It still holds true for the next 20 years.
Peter, would you like to comment on this? And see if you think you're...
I was distracted for a moment. I'm going to reread this while other people are talking.
And our two, for anybody who would like to comment on this, I think it could use some work. I mean, I don't know that we have a definition for high quality of architecture.
I'd like to hear from the architects because does this even need to be stated? I don't know.
Sorry, I was too focused on the word "smooth flow of vehicular traffic." Smooth flow.
Oh, we're at number eight.
Oh, eight. I'm sorry. The word should be the historic characters or historic architecture characters. Preserve and uphold, the respectable or, where is it called? The reason why high quality doesn't work is because quality could refer to energy performance, quality could refer to the material selection, and some of the timeless architecture doesn't really fall under that.
Mm-hmm.
So preserve and uphold the...
Do we want to use the word distinct?
My feeling is that it's pretty good the way it is. I mean, you could throw distinct in there. I would contemplate deleting the second sentence that begins with the word "promote," because we talk about neighborhoods, I think, in other statements. I think we do, maybe we don't. Promote the char... I don't know, neighborhoods. It doesn't make sense, promote the identification of neighborhoods.
No, it doesn't.
That sentence needs to be reworked, and I'll defer the word "Smith" on it for future reference, but I don't know how you...
The one thing that it doesn't get to, the first is to preserve and uphold the distinct architecture in Palm Springs. I think we want to promote, as we get new architecture, we want to promote new buildings, we want to promote good architecture, timeless, you know, something. I think it leaves out what we, future work.
Yeah.
So we need a sentence, I agree with you, to get rid of the second sentence, keep the third sentence, recognize the importance of adaptive reuse for architecturally and historically significant resources, and include something about design for new architecture, something like that.
Yeah, while encouraging design, quality in future building, future buildings.
Oh, while encouraging new designs.
Quality in new designs, yeah.
Flynn, do you have that? And I'm going to take one minute because I have to plug my computer in. So should we, would everybody like to take a five-minute break? Three-minute break? Or I'll be right back.
Madam Chair, we'll go ahead and take a break.
Thank you. Staff here?
Madam Chair, we are here and ready to go ahead and proceed with the meeting.
Okay. Is that number nine? David, do you want to do this one?
Certainly. So priority number nine is generally recommended to proceed as written. There was an addition of the words safe and complete streets. And so you'll see that after the first green sentence in the black text where it says, as the city develops, safe and complete streets and roadway improvements will be necessary to ensure safe and functioning network of circulation corridors and intersections. But in general, the steering committee felt that the priority still holds true. And so in terms of the survey respondents, 72% agreed that the priority is still relevant. There were some comments about more emphasis on mass transit, additional reference to safety as, as I said, the steering committee incorporated that and then referenced about parking.
As we take this up, the, number nine as written didn't include encouraging mass transit and it didn't mention parking. And I'm wondering if people think there are changes we should make to this or would like to make to this? Or is mass transit a separate goal? Commissioner Maruzzi and then Commissioner Song.
Parking is very important, especially with the discussions of the arena going downtown. So I think that parking has become a much more important issue than it was perhaps seven years ago or whenever the previous one was done.
And do you think it should be in this or it should be a separate, a separate priority?
I think it'd be, it could fit in here.
Okay. Commissioner Song?
So to piggyback Commissioner Maruzzi, it could be parking as far as strategic in the sense of that they may be reductions or they may be appropriate location. It falls under that entire umbrella, right? That's one question. And then the second part is that, I believe one of the comments was about keeping the neighborhood quiet so not major traffic of semi-track or commercial vehicles. So there could be a language of that traffic would also developed for commercial access separate to neighborhood access.
Preserving neighborhood tranquility, something like that.
Correct. I'm going to have to have you try and add some words to this.
I have a few words just for the, the parking. So provide a circulation system that accommodates a smooth flow of vehicular traffic with sufficient parking encourages blah blah blah. I mean, because when you talk about smooth flow of, you have to have a place to park once you have a lovely flow of traffic. So with sufficient parking, whatever that means exactly, doesn't mean building more garages or having, you know, more surface parking or whatever, but accommodates a smooth flow of vehicular traffic with sufficient parking. I mean, that might be awkward. I don't know what other people think.
You could say adequate.
Yeah. I could, I, I, I agree to that.
I think I like the word adequate better.
I have, I have, I don't, maybe it's getting too specific, but you know, we've looked at shared parking plans. I don't want parking to be the tail that wags the dog in this. And I think in certain instances of development, that's the case. And I just want to make sure it's, it's, it's a priority, but not the priority.
Then possibly the parking should go below in the verbiage?
Possibly. I, I, I don't know, maybe Flynn wants to chime in on that, but that's just my feeling.
Flynn, do you want to help us here with parking?
Yeah, what I think we might do, I'm looking at either the first or the second sentences below the header. Somehow we can say streets will be attractively developed, maintained to encourage bicycle, pedestrians, alternate forms of transportation and adequate parking or something like that. I, I think there's a way that we can add the phrase adequate parking to either the first or the second sentence there.
I'm good with that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and finish.
And how would we add encouraging mass transit?
I think what we would probably want to do, in some ways, I think it almost needs to be in the header. The other thought is if it's not in the header, then in the first sentence, safe and complete streets, transit and roadway improvements will be necessary to ensure a safe and functioning network. I, I think transit is really the key to a functioning network and so that's probably where transit belongs is in that first sentence.
So if city develops safe and complete streets, comma, transit, comma, and roadway improvements necessary to et cetera, et cetera. Just one word, the one word of transit?
Something like that. And again, if you'll give me a moment, when I bring this back in September, I'll have that a little bit better worked out.
Okay. Do we need anything else in this? Have we addressed it?
For safe business and residential circulation in the, at the end of a safe and functioning network of circulation corridors and intersections, protecting the commercial and residential corridors or protecting the...
Protecting residential neighborhoods from commercial traffic to the extent possible.
That sounds good.
So Flynn, can we add that as well?
Yes, we can.
Okay, does that work for you? I know we're doing a separate circulation element.
Yes, that's fine. I think that works.
Okay. Okay, and then I think we are at number, if I can find it, we're at number 10?
So number 10, priority number 10, the last priority that we have in the general plan was more geared towards promoting development and its impact, promoting development that enhances scenic views and provides both visual and physical access to the city's surrounding mountains, washes open space and other scenic and natural resources. So that was revised to remove the first phrase in that sentence to simply enhance views, view corridors, to provide visual and physical access to the city's surrounding mountains, washes, open spaces, et cetera. And then the next sentence was modified and shortened, so just basically rewritten to say unparalleled natural resources in and near Palm Strings add value to the city's quality of life and are an important contributor to the city's image as a destination resort. As far as the survey respondents, 77.6% agreed that the priority is relevant as written. Comments related to revisions are regarding concerns with the priority conflicting with other priorities relating to development and growth. So I think that's why you see the change that you, that we have here before you from the steering committee. Comment about exchanging the word promote with support, a comment about replace wash with ephemeral stream, and a comment about changing, change to enhances and protects. So again, not so much promoting development and how it might impact the city's scenic views, but more about enhancing our views and protecting view corridors. So those are really the, the feedback that we got and then the steering committee changes that you have.
And when we look at this, we had gotten, I don't know why I'm not getting priority 10 up, but it's moving around. The, if you look at the comments and the summary of the survey, it said outside, out of the comments received, one of the themes was the importance of preserving and conserving our natural beauty and lands. And I think that's not, so one question is do we want to include that? And that was on, wish I had the, page two of the survey results that we were sent. So is this fine as it is or do we include some language to conserve, preserve and conserve? Michael, Commissioner Hirschbaum, sorry.
That'd be me. Okay, so obviously based on the survey and the comments we received, open space is a very important aspect of the enjoyment of this community by its citizens and I think it deserves a separate vision and I think it needs to be up at the top, not at the bottom. And I just put some words together before this meeting and it says, so this is about open space, foster and enhance opportunities for open space retention and expansion that allows neighborhood access throughout the city. Parks should include both passive and active forms of recreation.
Do you want to read that again?
Slowly, please.
Of course I do. Foster and enhance opportunities for open space retention and expansion that allows neighborhood access throughout the city. Parks should include both passive and active forms of recreation.
You may, the only question I have is you may have some areas where conserving might not allow you to have active, you might just have someplace where you can only have passive use.
Well, I don't mean each park should have that. I just mean in general, we should be pursuing those opportunities.
Are those opportunities so that the, say, the open spaces are converted into natural parks or designated as natural parks?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
So the, the first part of your statement, which I like very much, is about conserving and preserving open spaces. The second part suggests that the, these open spaces will become park-like facilities in the city of Palm Strings. Is that true?
Well, not necessarily. I'm, I'm talking about all open space. In my mind, I'm thinking about all open space and some open space will be natural canyons or alluvial, alluvial fans or hillsides or hiking trails. And some parts will be soccer fields and basketball courts and picnic areas. So I just want to make sure that the statement includes references to all types of recreation. Not every single facility accommodates all types of recreation.
And for enhancing, fostering and enhancing opportunities, often the, some of the opportunities may be having those areas in a conservation trust of some sort as opposed to a city park.
Well, maybe park is the wrong word. Maybe you should just say open space should include.
Yes. Flynn, do you have that language?
I do with the substitution of open space for parks in the second sentence.
And possibly that going up to what, number two? Michael?
Well, I mean, it needs to be here at the top based on what we're hearing from the community, but yeah, two would be good.
Do we have agreement on this? Thumbs up? Thumbs up. Okay, we have agreement on that. What about going back to number 10? Which is a use?
Well, I think it's, I think it's separate. I don't think it overlaps. I think, you know, we've had issues where developments potentially block use of certain natural features and we take that into consideration and we should, but that doesn't talk about open space retention and enhancement.
Right. So just, does anybody have any problems with the language or the edits? Do you want to accept it? It looks like it's thumbs up from everybody, no comments. Is there anything else that we've missed that should be one of the priorities?
I, I didn't see much about families in there at all in any of the priorities. I think, I think someone brought it up and you said, you're going to see how it goes along and see if...
Well, it was one of the areas where it said more services and amenities geared towards families.
Do you remember which one it was?
It's not in, in ours. It was one of the comments that came out of the survey. It was one of the themes. And it, we could, we could include it in the create, maintain and enhance unique places that promote engagement and interaction and we could put a special emphasis on families in that. That's one of the places where we could do an edit. Would that be enough or do we need a separate?
I think it would be enough just to add it. I don't think we need a separate place for it.
So Flynn, if we... So Flynn, if we go back to number six, uh, and add an emphasis on providing services in these facilities that are accessible to families?
Okay, we'll go ahead and add that language when we bring it back for you.
Good, thank you. Is there anything else if we, Commissioner Song?
Um, I think I'm, uh, so sort of overriding in the sense that I wanted to have something more specific towards education, but that would involve the school district or other, um, authority, having jurisdiction that is outside of the city, which we may not, but my last plea will be to have a city that welcomes education and welcomes innovation and development. Um, and that's, that's the area that seems to be missing, but we may not have any control over that.
I agree with you. I'm not sure where we put it or how we do it.
Well, it might go into number three.
So innovation, where it says develop and encourage employment and education opportunities?
I do think that you're, you're talking about education, higher, higher educational opportunities, um, and encouraging businesses that are innovative?
Right. I have, I know have, um, their innovation section, but it would be great if it could be even more supportive.
Flynn, do you think that we can add this to that language?
Yeah, I think that would be the place to add it. Um, so I've got a couple of thoughts there. I liked the statement that Commissioner Song said about welcoming education or focusing on higher education. I think those are both good things relative to our economy that we need to encourage, uh, and then encouraging businesses that are innovative. So we'll try and work that language into priority number three, and then bring that back to you, um, to make sure that we got it correct.
Thank you very much.
Uh, for everyone else here, is there anything else that we've missed? Where, are we, do, do we think that this, Commissioner Song? Oh, that's a yes. That's a thumbs up? Thumbs up from everybody that we're done? Great. I will turn this, I think at this point, I will turn this back to our director to sum up what we've done before we adjourned the meeting.
Madam Chair, unfortunately, uh, I've got five pages of notes here. I don't want to go through all of those, uh, but all of your comments have been recorded in terms of the changes to each of the priorities as well as the changes to the vision statement. As I had mentioned before, what we will do is refine those, uh, changes and bring them back to you at your first meeting in September with the idea that we would then be able to forward those on to the city council for their second meeting in September. Uh, and so that's the schedule that we're on with the changes to the vision and priorities. Uh, and with that, Mr. Newell, do you have any additional comments or presentation?
Yeah, so I'll, uh, if we could jump back to the, the slides. So going, uh, moving on, so yeah, as Director Fag mentioned, um, our next steps will really be to refine the vision and priorities, um, and we'll take that to city council after we've gotten the planning commission's final, um, review. We are also, as, as you know, updating other, or three elements or four elements of the general plan, the housing element, the land use element, the circulation element, and the safety elements. Um, and so now, after we have the final version of what, you know, the long-term vision and priorities are of the city, we can, um, refine the elements that I mentioned and update goals and policies. Uh, and so what we'll be doing as we move along, um, we'll be reviewing these items with the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, the Steering Committee, um, and then, um, they'll be coming back to the Planning Commission for review. Um, you can see here on the slide that some of the next steps that we have and recent actions that we've done, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee has met and reviewed kind of our, our introduction to the housing element and the strategies that we're looking at to address our housing needs, uh, and what this, the Southern California Association of Governments, uh, our MPO, Metropolitan Planning Agency, is, um, telling us we're going to have to plan for, uh, for our next eight-year period as a part of our regional housing needs assessment, or regional housing needs allocation, um, and the mix of affordable housing that we will have to, uh, provide, uh, as a part of our update to the housing element. So the Affordable Housing Subcommittee reviewed the direction, reviewed our, um, our strategies there, and they gave us some direction on that. Um, the Steering Committee has met three occasions. They'll have meeting number four, um, to review our general plan, goals, and policies. Um, we have already actually had the city council review traffic impact analysis guidelines. Uh, those are required as, uh, the state had, uh, adopted SB 743 in 2015, um, related to vehicle miles traveled. Uh, and so as of July 1, the, the new metric for measuring, um, the way, uh, traffic impacts are analyzed is now by vehicle miles traveled as opposed to the historical level of service that we have used for so many years. Um, so that's also, um, a step that we've been, we've taken, or we've, um, completed or, and will be reviewing as a part of the update to the circulation element. Uh, and then, uh, you see some of the other details that we'll be getting into here. We'll have a public workshop here in the fall. Um, again, additional review by the Housing Subcommittee and Planning Commission for updates to the general plan. And then after all of that, we'll get into the, uh, environmental analysis that's required for the, uh, update. So, uh, those are really, uh, kind of the next steps that we're looking at. Um, again, we are keeping, uh, our website updated regularly, psgeneralplan.com to, um, inform the public on when the city is having meetings. The website also has, uh, survey, the surveys that, the ones that we've had. We've had two surveys so far. Uh, obviously, we went through the first survey of the vision and priorities, uh, but we also had a survey on, um, finding more information on, or input on the land use circulation and housing element, um, housing elements as we look to get into kind of the details of updating those, those chapters. So that's, uh, that really completes my presentation, and, um, happy to answer any questions the planning commission might have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I have just one comment, and excuse me for taking this out of order, but the other place to look at families might be in the housing, uh, the language on housing with some emphasis on creating units that are large enough for families with children. Commissioner Song?
Um, so, um, the, the, in the public comment, there was a concern about the general plan and the zoning not matching, um, regarding the, uh, the property, um, by Whitewater and Tipton Road. Is this a place where that could be applied, or is that something that the staff is taking under consideration as the general plan update?
Madam Chair, to respond to that, that's something that we can consider as part of this general plan update. Staff already has that parcel on our radar. Uh, one of the things that we'll be doing as we look at the land use element, uh, is to identify any discrepancies between the general plan and zoning, uh, and to correct those, uh, as part of the general plan update process. So we are looking at that. We wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission and the Steering Committee have those comments as well as others submitted by the public on their radar so that they're aware of them.
Thank you. Any other questions? There being none, we can move to Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Are there any? There being none, uh, we can move to the Planning Director's report.
Madam Chair, just a couple of things for you. First of all, the city council considered the food desert ordinance at their last meeting on Thursday, the 23rd. I just wanted to let you know, they did make a couple of minor modifications to the proposed ordinance as you forwarded it to them. One was to expand the square footage for a qualifying grocery store. We had a cap at 40,000 square feet. They wanted to increase that to 60,000 square feet. They also wanted to put a cap on alcohol sales as an accessory use, so we've limited that to no more than 30% of their total sales or square footage. And then finally, they wanted to have a separate conditional use permit for any accessory gas sales. Uh, so those are the changes that the city council imposed, and it now goes for second reading on the August 6 city council meeting. So again, we're happy for the work that the Planning Commission did on that, and we'll have that in place here shortly. The second announcement that I have for you is sadly, we received the resignation letter from Commissioner Donenfeld. Uh, Mr. Donenfeld is moving, and consequently, he has turned in his resignation from the Planning Commission. So I would just like to thank Mr. Donenfeld. I wish he was with us here this evening, but I'd like to thank him for his service. Uh, he has been on the Planning Commission for an extended period of time with a little bit of a gap between his service as he took one year off in between, uh, his terms on the Planning Commission. But we appreciate all the work that he's put into that, serving on subcommittees with us, and, uh, again, his knowledge and his background in the legal field have come and served us well here in the city of Palm Springs. So a thank you to Mr. Donenfeld, and we're sorry that he wasn't here with us this evening. Madam Chair, that is it. We will be adjourned to our meeting on September the 9th.
And the Planning Commission is hereby adjourned till Friday and Wednesday, September 9th. Have a nice August, everyone.